Good afternoon, everybody. Today is a special committee of the whole for the purpose of interviews of six candidates for the vacant city council position. We have had each of the candidates submit applications. Each council membership has that on their iPad, and we will be starting in the order presented by the city clerk. We have asked that each of the candidates who has not yet been interviewed step outside in the hallway until they have been interviewed, and then they could stay in the room. That is our protocol, and we would ask that everyone would honor that. But to start after that, I will, before that, I will also read the, there are some audience members, so, good evening. Because this is a public meeting, we ask that all members of the audience please remain quiet and remain, and refrain from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. Also, I remind everyone to please silence all electronic devices, including myself. All right. With that, Madam Clerk, you'll do a roll call?
Yes, I will. Thank you. Councilmember Forbes?
Present.
Councilmember Bench?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Moore?
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Present.
Councilmember Millen?
Present.
Councilmember Balls?
Present.
Councilmember Oystas?
Present.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
We have eight members present, zero absent.
All right. We are ready to proceed. The applicants were randomly drawn for the purpose of the order of the interviews. Each applicant will be given 15 minutes for their interview, and the time will be monitored by the city clerk. A list of questions will also be up on the podium for anyone to follow. Again, I ask the remaining applicants to honor their privacy and fairness to the process by waiting in the adjoining room until called by city staff. At this time, would the first person to be interviewed?
Yes, Mayor. Jasmine Calhoun is not here yet.
Okay.
So if we could just hold off on her interview?
We will do that.
Until later, maybe. Our first interview then would be Nathan Collison.
The process we will follow, council members, will be to, each council member will read one of the questions. There are eight of us, and eight questions. We can rotate them. Councilmember Oystas, you would be the first question.
Okay.
And we'll move along. I would do the last, as the, we'll just move along, just the normal process of speaking, of councilmembers addressing the audience. So, and then once the first candidate has been interviewed, the next, the first question will be by Councilmember Balls, and so on. All right. Everyone, are we ready for candidate Collison?
Yeah.
Mr. Collison, if you'll step forward, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
And, yep. Councilmember Oystas, you will read the first question.
Okay. Question number one. What do you find most notable about tonight's 6:30 PM regular meeting agenda?
Thank you. Initially, thank you for giving me the opportunity to appear before council today regarding the vacancy. I think that the most important thing, at least to me, on tonight's agenda is the appointment of board, commission, and committee members. This is really the best way for citizens and the community members to get involved with the city and have a voice regarding city projects and goals. I myself serve on the Riverfront Development Commission. Also, participation by citizens creates a sense of ownership and pride, and we want people to feel like their city belongs to them and to be ambassadors or liaisons of these groups and committees within their own neighborhoods.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Balls?
How would you maintain the progress made regarding the controls of crime and blight?
That's a great question. I was a prosecutor here in Saginaw for five years, and over the last, of the course of the last year, I've been in private practice. Now, the large part of that practice involves criminal defense now, and over the years I've observed two things that most people charged with crimes have in common, and this is a lack of education and a lack of employment. Therefore, based on my experience, the best way to fight and reduce crime is education and jobs. And improving the quality of and access to education and job opportunities in the city will not only reduce crime, but improving on both of these will also reduce blight. When you have a quality education and a good job, you have pride in yourself, and when someone has pride in themselves, that attitude spills over into their community and neighborhoods. It becomes infectious and can be a catalyst for change.
All right. Next question, Councilmember Millen.
Share your ideas on ways to attract new residences and businesses to the city.
Thank you. Now, before we talk about attracting new businesses and residents, we first need to address the issue of keeping the residents and businesses that we already have. And I'm talking about brain drain. Now, I grew up with some of the most intelligent and talented people that I have ever met, and by way of background, I grew up here in Saginaw. Among them are former Saginaw residents who are executives at companies like Netflix, Amazon, The Gap, and Starbucks, just to name a few. There are many more who became renowned physicians, scientists, lawyers, professors, mechanics, and pipe fitters and electricians working on the highest caliber civilian and government jobs. Well, these people have different professions and faith traditions and even educational backgrounds. They all have two things in common. They are from Saginaw and did not come back here. They didn't come back here to live, to work, or raise their families. Let that sink in for a minute. If we can create an environment that meets the needs of our best and brightest, such that they want to settle down here after college or trade school, then we will simultaneously create an environment that is favorable for attracting business and industry.
Through. On, Councilmember Scherzer.
Based on the priorities set by the council and administration staff, which priorities do you think are most important for council to focus on?
So, current priorities include economic development of the urban core, neighborhood revitalization, arts, culture, and recreation, police and fire, and utilities and infrastructure. Well, I think all of these are important. The most pressing and impactful are neighborhood revitalization and utilities and infrastructure. Looking at utilities and infrastructure, we as a country, not just a city, are facing a situation where much of our infrastructure is many, many decades old. The same is true here. We have lead water service lines, crumbling roads and bridges, a water plant that needs upgrading or replacement, and we need to address our wastewater treatment facilities. This infrastructure concern directly impacts our neighborhoods and therefore our residents. As citizens, we need clean water, good roads, and sanitary services that reduce our population's impact on the environment. Our neighborhoods are the lifeblood of our city, and it's axiomatic that revitalization of them will be a catalyst to overall prosperity in the city.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem?
The city's general fund property taxes revenue is capped, and the cap is not adjustable for inflation. State revenue sharing has been reduced. How can the city offer necessity services as these two important revenue streams decline?
Thank you. That's a great question. Now, first, as I'm sure you all know, Saginaw has two tax caps, both of which were established in 1979. One imposes a millage rate cap of 7.5 mils, and the other imposes a dollar limit on the overall property tax the city is able to collect. Prior to 1979, Saginaw was able to levy 10 mils, but in that year, the city charter was amended to reduce millage rates from 10 to 7 and 1/2. We call this the rate cap. And the dollar amount was also limited, the actual amount that that 7 and 1/2 mils could raise was also limited. Call that the dollar cap, 3.8 million. And it's important to note, there's no adjustment here for inflation. The 1979 changes not only reduced revenue for vital city services, it prohibited the city from benefiting from growth by limiting the actual dollar amount it can collect from property taxes. It can only get the same amount it collected in 1979. So no matter how much Saginaw grows, no matter how many new homes or businesses are created, the city cannot collect more than the same amount it collected 41 years ago. Now, effective management over the last 40 years has allowed the city to maintain most public services and even enhance others, despite an over 40% cut in the labor force. Not many families or businesses that I know of could survive on the same income that they had in 1979. Likewise, the city can no longer absorb these cutbacks without reducing and eliminating vital public services. Therefore, I propose we start by getting rid of the tax caps. Then we can focus on other potential revenue streams.
Okay. Councilmember Bench, next question.
Good evening. Please share your thoughts on what you see as opportunities and challenges facing the city.
So, as the, as the city manager has pointed out, some of the challenges facing the city are lack of resources, decrease in population, unfunded mandates, aged infrastructure, housing, image, diversity in employment, transparency, and repurposing empty buildings. Now, things like lack of resources and decrease in population are not within, necessarily within the city's control, but forcibly, the city is facing a lot more opportunities than there are challenges. We have increased development. We have increased interest regionally in investment in the city, particularly in the Riverfront Saginaw District. Now, over the last six years, there has been a number of changes which have drastically changed the way the city looks and the way that it does business. Community, economic development need to continue to be a key focus, and I'll point to a couple of things most recently. So we got the SVRC Marketplace, just completed its first year of operation, and gives a lot of amenities to the residents of the cities of Saginaw and opportunities for new businesses to open. The downtown campus for Delta College is done. Classes will begin in the fall. Further, the city of Saginaw, along with the Michigan Municipal League and Saginaw Future, are continuing to look for new services and new resources to enhance our business areas. And then we also have a number of community organizations who are working to promote the city and its image, such as Riverfront Saginaw.
Okay. Councilmember Forbes?
What is the role of a city council member?
So as a member of the legislative branch of the city government, as well as its policymaking body, a councilperson serves the citizens of the city of Saginaw by working as a team with other council members and the city manager to promote our city and develop policies and programs to implement the city's goals. Major projects and infrastructure improvements, which can range from community growth to land uses to even finances and, well, probably most importantly, strategic planning.
Good. Last, describe a community service or other role you have been involved in that has had an impact in the city.
Like I said before, I was a prosecutor for five years, and during that time, I was one of only two assistant prosecutors who actually lived in the city, and now I think there's only one. The other at the time was DeMontibes. In that role, I sought justice for crime victims and their families in court, and also worked with law enforcement and community leaders through various outreach programs, like the Safe Street Programs, and conducted trainings for citizen groups and other, and our local law enforcement agencies. As I also mentioned, I sit on the Riverfront Development Commission and am a former chairperson. I've co-chaired the Riverfront Beautification Day with Clint Bryant since 2014. I am the president and co-founder of Saginaw Art Initiative, which is a domestic nonprofit corporation that my wife and I formed to organize and fund the Saginaw Art Fair and Old Town Saginaw. And as a board member of the Fordney Club, I also helped raise and direct tens of thousands of dollars to help support youth athletics to many schools and youth athletic organizations here in the city.
Okay. That wraps up our questions. Did you have any questions of us?
No, just thanks for your time and thanks for listening.
All right. Very good. Thank you. All right.
Lynn Elliott.
Do they have a copy of the questions?
They're up there.
On the podium.
At the podium?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
That's a good question.
What did he say?
He asked if he had a copy of the questions.
On the podium? Yeah, more than a copy.
He had a copy.
This is Lynn Elliott.
Ms. Elliott, please step to the podium, and we will be asking you eight questions. Each council member will ask a question, and we will start with Councilmember Balls. When you're ready.
I'm ready. Wait, Mayor, but is Councilmember Balls going to still ask number two?
First question. No, he'll, no, we'll just...
I highly recommend that everyone ask the same question because you repeat it in the same manner and tone.
We can, I mean, we can, council members. That's fine. I was just going to rotate, which we've done in the past, but that's fine.
Mr. Oystas.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Oystas.
Yeah, we'll start with Mr. Oystas.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
First question is, what do you find most notable about tonight's 6:30 PM regular meeting agenda?
I looked at it just briefly, but I did attend the last meeting when we awarded, question mark, in the mysterium, so I kind of have a feel for what goes on here at the meetings. I like the way it's organized. That's kind of the way I am. If we're going to do number one and number two, then we're going to do number one first, and so on, and it looks like everybody gets a chance to speak equally.
Anything further?
No.
All right. Yeah, we, one of the councilmembers has asked that you use the mic just for everyone's convenience. It will help us.
Sure.
You can lower the...
Yeah, very good, Lynn. For short people.
Okay. Councilmember Balls?
Good evening. How would you maintain the progress made regarding the council control of fighting crime here in Saginaw?
Well, I am new to the city, just moved into the Bancroft a few months ago, and opened a business with my fiancee out on Grasset, Saginaw Gold Exchange, and I'm amazed. I used to, I'll back up a little bit. I lived here as a child, left when I was 18, just got back a few months ago. I'm amazed at how beautiful the city seems to be compared to where I came from. I was living in the Flint area, and the roads here are so much better. I don't know if you want to hear that or not, but they are so much better. The trash pickup here is great, so of course, when you drive around in some neighborhoods, it's sad, and that is one of the things I had written on my little agenda that I'd like to work on.
Next question.
Please share your ideas on ways to attract new residents and businesses to the city.
Well, before I retired, I was a teacher, and I'm very interested in what the Saginaw schools are going to possibly try to do to make their schools better than they are, and I think a partnership with the city council would be something I would be interested in working on. Also, again, saying I came from the Flint area, I certainly wouldn't want any lead water issues here in Saginaw, so if there's something like that going on, that could be something to work on and attract people. If they knew there was no lead in the water, that might be a good thing. Also, the use of the buildings. We have some of the most beautiful, beautiful architectural buildings here, and when I see them, I think, wow, what could be? I also used to work with Habitat for Humanity in the Flint area, and we worked on a lot of buildings where it was a resident and a business building, so the residents may have lived upstairs and opened a business downstairs. So, again, it's a use of a building, so something to consider. I've also been reading about Infused Saginaw, and it seems like those people are interested in the same kind of thing. Don't know what kind of relationship the city council has with them, but it sounds interesting. Yeah, I think using, making use of those vacant buildings would attract people.
All right. Next question.
Based on the priorities set by the council and administration staff, which priorities do you think are most important for council to focus on?
I really don't know what the priorities are because I haven't been here very long, but I would think the use of the buildings to attract people to be here would be very important.
Good. Mayor Pro Tem?
The city general fund's property tax revenue is capped, and the cap is not adjustable for inflation. State revenue share has been reduced. How can the city offer necessary services, excuse me, as these two important revenue streams decline?
Well, hmm, if you don't have people here, it's a little hard to generate tax, so I would think that attracting people here to get that tax money would probably be a priority.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Next question.
Please share your thoughts on what you see as opportunities and challenges facing the city.
I wanted to be on the city council, first of all, because I don't have an agenda, but I think there's so much opportunity here, getting as many people involved, as many groups that are already here in the city trying to do things for people here. It seems like there would be a lot of opportunity to help with what we try to do here on this council.
Okay. Next question.
What is the role of a city council member?
Oh, big time listening to what people have to say. At the meeting I did attend, you were all so respectful to people as they came up to the microphone, and, but yet, we didn't lag along. I mean, things moved right along, and I think the role of the council member is going to be to listen, first of all, control yourself so that you don't respond in a way that's inappropriate, and if you're out and about in the city and people know you're on the council, I think you have to keep what should, things that shouldn't be shared, quiet, but yet, things that could be shared, things that are going on that are positive, definitely be shared.
All right. Describe a community service or other role you have been involved in that has had an impact in the city.
Well, again, I just moved here, so I haven't been involved in the city of Saginaw, but I sure would like to be, and when I talked about working with Habitat in the Flint area, I don't know how active that group is here in the city, but that is an amazing way to get families. It's not a giveaway program like a lot of people think, families involved, but I'd like to be involved in something like that.
All right. Thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
Hmm, I think I talked my little questions through. I would just have a general question because I don't know this. The lead in the water study, anything going on with that?
There's a state law that addresses that that we're following.
Okay. There was a lot of digging this, right after the holidays at the Water Works, so I wondered, hmm, I wonder what's going on.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Our next candidate coming in is Paul Mason.
Okay. Mr. Mason, welcome. Come, step forward to the podium, and you can let us know when you're ready.
Okay, I'll set.
All right. First question will be by Councilmember Oystas.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What do you find most notable about tonight's 6:30 PM regular meeting agenda?
Well, it, I, it, just the process here of doing this, I guess I've never, never done anything like this before, so I did look over the agenda a little bit.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
All right. Councilmember Balls?
Paul, how would you maintain the progress made regarding the control of blight and crime here?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
How would you, how would you maintain the progress made here in the city with blight and crime?
Well, I think, I don't think there's a one-size-fits-all to it. I mean, there's, I actually don't see crime as being the biggest issue facing the city. I think, I actually think the infrastructure, the roads are the biggest issue that we face and...
Anything else? All right. Next question.
Share your ideas on ways to attract new residents and businesses to the city.
I think, I think we have to be open to new things. I was actually kind of disappointed in the council's decision on the recreational marijuana thing. I, as I say, I think, I think the biggest issue facing the city is, is the roads, and particularly, like where I live, I live over on the, in the St. Stevens area, and they did a nice job of redoing Mackinaw up to Congress, and it's very nice because up till then, basically, you were fighting cars to drive down the middle lane till it was redone, but they obviously stopped there because they ran out, they didn't have the money to finish the street and further on in Mackinaw, and that's not the only street in the city. I've actually been, I'm retired now, going on three years, and for a little over a year now, I've been doing a fair amount of ride sharing, and I've driven on a lot of roads in the city that I didn't know existed and some that probably shouldn't exist. And then obviously, the reason they're there is, I mean, it's money. We've got to find ways to raise it, and it's going to come through attracting small business and, and small business that subsides off of the small business. And I don't know how big this recreational marijuana, I mean, I think we've heard is like Colorado, but I do know that there's a lot of subsidiary things that ride along with it. For example, last summer, they did a, there was a cannabis, some kind of cannabis convention down in, I think, Leclerc Race Track or something, but I can't tell you just up to this far how many rides I gave to people that were either here for that or, you know, associated with it.
Okay. Next question.
Based on the priorities set by the council and administration staff, which priorities do you think are most important for council to focus on?
Well, as I say, I think the infrastructure is the, is the biggest. I, I was born and raised here. I lived here pretty much all my life, minus, minus a couple of years when I was younger. I remember the city at its peak when I used to spend the summer, Saturdays downtown, taking the bus downtown. I actually, my father managed a parking lot that I would work at after school at night, and of course, then we saw the stores leave, and then around the same time, a lot of people were leaving Michigan. But now that we're revitalizing, we've got to look to new things that, you know, I don't know that anybody has an answer to what will work here. What's, what will work here may not work someplace else and vice versa, but I don't think we, I think we've got to be open to try new things, and we can't be afraid of failure.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem?
Excuse me. The city general fund's property tax revenue is capped, and the cap is not adjustable for inflation. State revenue share has been reduced. How can the city offer necessary services as these two important revenue streams decline?
Well, and that's, that's part of the issue that basically every city within the state has been put into, is that rather than draw money off of, off of, off of other services, we're kind of, we're kind of tied to the income tax, and obviously, a lot of the income is not, not in the city. And so, again, it comes down to, you know, cooperation with, with businesses, new business, small business, that's where the income and that's where the jobs are going to be generated in this country, and we've got to be able to, and we can't, nobody, we'd love to be able to make everybody successful, we can't do that, but if we can create an environment that allows people to succeed, you know, as they say, small business, that's, that's where to add, and some will work and some won't. We know a lot will fail, but we've got to keep trying. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question.
Please share your thoughts on what you see as opportunities and challenges facing the city.
Well, I think, as I said, I've kind of addressed it. I think, I think the biggest challenge to me, or that I see again, is the, the condition of the roads. They're, as I say, just, just specific examples, driving from down Mackinaw from Congress to Michigan, you really can't go much over an idling speed, and Graham Road between Adams and Mackinaw is really not much higher than a gravel road. So those are things we got to fix, and obviously, they're, they're there because of the money situation, and again, it comes down to attracting small business and creating an environment where, you know, one business, and the business may not even be within the city, but people within the city work there. I take a lot of people that work at the hotels on Tete Boisie, so the location of, the area in general is what has to succeed, so...
What is the role of a council member?
To represent the, to represent the citizens of this... To represent the, to represent the citizens of this, of the city and to, again, to, again, we can't, we can't say that everybody's going to be successful, nobody can guarantee that, but we can create an environment that allows people to succeed, and to that extent, whatever we can do to make that happen is.
Okay. Last, describe a community service or other role you have been involved in that has had an impact in the city.
When I was, as I said, for many years, I, I was an umpire at Hoyt Park with, I mean, I, to me, I think Hoyt Park, for a softball facility, is one of the finest, finest in the, it's finest, I, I've umpired in many places, I've not seen anybody better. You could sit on the hill and you could literally watch five or six games at a time, and it was a big part of my life growing up, I mean, playing knothole there, and then, as I say, I umpired there from eighty-nine until basically this, well, the city then when they, when they disbanded the recreation department, and still, I, I stayed down there because it was run first privately by the YMCA, took it over, and then there were still a couple of other people that carried on with the Friends of Hoyt Park initiative, and that was a big part of my life growing up, and it always will be. It was a special place to, to umpire, a special place to play and.
Okay. Is there anything else?
No, that's it.
All right. Do you have any questions of us?
Not that I can think of.
All right. Well, thank you very much for coming in for us.
Thank you.
Our next person will be Dawn Goodroll-Hillier.
Good to see you. We appreciate you coming in today and.
Thank you.
The first questions will be started by Ms., Councilmember Ossas, as soon as you're ready.
Okay, welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for having me here today.
Are you ready?
Question number one, what do you find most notable about tonight's 6:30 PM regular meeting agenda? Excuse me. What do you find most notable about tonight's 6:30 PM regular meeting agenda?
Well, the first thing is I want to commend whomever decided to put a consent agenda together so that each item didn't need to be read and gone through for every meeting. I've sat through plenty of long meetings here, so whomever was in charge of that, thank you. One thing I saw on there is that there's, means there, it will be money allocated towards some removal of trees in the cemetery, so I'm sure that there are trees that are probably just old and probably dangerous, dead, need to be taken down, so I know we've received some flak from folks for us not caring for our cemeteries in the past, and I'm glad to see that we are making some efforts there. The other thing, I think that was on there, I kind of have it in front of me. Mostly, everything was in the consent. I know that transportation is making, is giving a presentation tonight, Glenn Stephens.
Okay.
How's that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next question. Councilmember Bowles.
How would you maintain the progress made regarding the control of blight and crime?
Well, we've done a great job so far with the grants that we've received in all of the, the thousands of houses that we've taken down, as well as some of the commercial properties along some of the throughways, so we've made a remarkable headway in cleaning up some of the neighborhoods. I think some of the, some new things that have been put in place by the police chief, say, like the police chief's meeting, getting out into the neighborhoods and making connections with neighbors, having the information line intact and giving that information out has helped neighbors feel more connected. Neighbors are coming forward and keeping in touch with our staff and with people that can make efforts to take care of problems in, in the area. And then, I think the other thing is we need to, you know, let people know that we feel safe in, at our house or our business and, and continue, you know, what we've been doing.
Next question.
Share your ideas on ways to attract new residents and businesses to the city.
Um, I think that, you know, we have a, a great bank of affordable housing, and I think getting people to live here, maybe making, giving some deals, perhaps like the hospitals do, Covenant and Ascension, the walk-to-work programs, maybe making that some kind of, some kind of tax incentive perhaps to maybe our city staff or to our police and fire, our teachers. I think there was a lot to be said when you had your firefighter living next door to you. I don't think it should be something that we insist on or that, I don't even think you can make it a law, but, but, so that there are incentives to the city that they can be living in our neighborhood. Also, to attract people from outside, I think we're doing that. I think the marketing campaign that just has been unveiled, I think, is a, a great campaign, and the new guy that's doing social media for the city is getting out a lot of good messaging and positive messaging and, but I know I heard at one of the council, council meetings recently, actually, I think by one of our school board members, that said, "We need housing that is newer and a bit more expensive," that some of people that have a, a larger salary can spend money on housing, and I thought, you know, that would actually, those would be folks that are paying an income tax, that would build our tax base a little bit more. And I know tax base is something that we do struggle with in bringing in that additional income into the city, so, what was the question again? Kind of went off on that.
Share your ideas on ways to attract new residents and businesses to the city.
Residents. It's a good place to live and it's a good place to do business, again, affordability with doing business as well. You know, we've made great strides in downtown and in Old Town, and just to continue telling that story.
All right. Next question.
Based on the priorities set by the council and administration staff, which priorities do you think are most important for council to focus on?
Well, they're all important. Right now, I think police and fire, we have a millage coming up, and I think so right now, today, I think getting out, getting people to vote for that millage for next week is priority at this moment. I think then, after that, because we have to have a safe city, we have to have a place where people feel that they, they are safe and that crime is down, and that someone can put out a fire at their house. That millage is crucial. We need to put that in place. After that, we need to build the city. We're making, again, headway with bringing things back into the city and building economic development. We're already doing a great job on, with neighborhood revitalization, with the, the blight remediation that's happened and taking care of our neighborhoods and, and keeping or, being organized, and we just need to build on that. We have arts and culture. We need to make sure that that's there for everybody, and so, I guess in prioritizing then would be infrastructure, making sure that our infrastructure is safe. I know I got a letter recently that said, you know, I always say, "Oh, my gosh, we have the best drinking water, wish we would have sold it," and, and I know a lot of other people say that too, but it is good drinking water, but we got a, a notice recently that said there may be some infrastructure, it may have passed through some lead pipes, so I'm glad that we're aware of that. Of course, we're all aware of what happened in Flint and just, you know, the fact that we are, have made that a priority and we're working on that is also key.
All right. Your approach then?
The city general fund's property tax revenue is capped, is capped, and the cap is not adjustable for inflation. State revenue share has been reduced. How can the city offer necessary services on these two important revenue streams decline?
Well, I think another way is getting more people living in the city. We have the income tax, so that would increase revenue there. Our, I don't promote a raise in property taxes because we do have so many millages, but we are, that tax cap is crucial, and I talked to Paul Versiglio, he had schooled me in it once, a while ago, when I ran for council, and how that tax cap works, and once he did that, I thought, gosh, if we could explain that to our constituents of how that tax cap works or doesn't work and get the word out, I think in the future, once we get some of these other priorities taken care of, we need to go back and revisit that, but we need a strong team and a team that can communicate exactly what, what the cap is and how it works. And then, hopefully, down the road, revenue sharing, it's something that we can lobby for with our, our state reps and senator.
All right. Next question.
Please share your thoughts on what you see as opportunities and challenges facing the city.
So many opportunities. Again, arts and culture is alive, and we have so many things, there are so many things to do. Folks that say there's nothing to do in Saginaw, I could cringe because there are so many events happening that there's not enough time, so, and there's opportunities for business. We need to connect people with business education, and we're doing a good job at that right now too. The DDA and the SBA are getting out and meeting with potential entrepreneurs. We have a Saginaw soup that just occurred last week, and we have actually even folks that have put in money to encourage entrepreneurship, and the winners of these, of the Saginaw Soup Contest got some starter funds to help them. So, you know, there's opportunities like that. Delta College, you can get some college courses for, you know, pretty inexpensive, and it's good education, you can, that can have, attain that right in downtown Saginaw. Our challenges, I think our biggest challenge is our school system at this time. I think we need to do better communicating with our school system and being in touch and collaborating and partnering with them, and, and I see that that is starting to happening, starting to happen. We need new school, good schools if we want to attract people to our area, young people, grow our city.
Okay. Next question.
What is the role of a council member?
Our role is to listen to our constituents. We're here representing our community and serve the people that entrust us to be at the table making decisions and being a voice for them. And I've had the opportunity to be in the community for a number of years through my business, and then, just recently, working with the Eastside Soup Kitchen, and so, I've been, had the privilege to work with different sects of our community, and it's been very eye-opening, and I feel like I can come to the table with the knowledge of folks that are, when you talk about challenges, there are challenges with the poverty rate and the Alice rate of the city, and so, we have to be mindful and remember the folks that are living in the city when we do make decisions.
Okay. Describe a community service or other role you have been involved in that has had an impact in the city.
Well, I've been an owner of Dawn of a New Day Coffee House and Cafe in downtown Saginaw for fifteen years in May. It'll be fifteen years, and that, I would say, is my biggest accomplishment, especially to all the naysayers that said I couldn't do it and that I would close. From that, I became a member of the Downtown Saginaw Association and have served as their co-chair. We do various product, projects in the downtown area. I work on the Arts and Enrichment Commit, Commission Council. There, I serve in various capacities. One of the committees that I'm very engaged on is the Downtown Development Authority, and I've been on that committee for probably about eight to ten years. I did have the opportunity to run for council probably about eight to ten years ago, and that was very eye-opening and it was a great learning experience, and though I didn't get a seat at the table, it was, it was a great opportunity to learn the process. As I mentioned, I've been working at the Eastside Soup Kitchen, and I'm no longer there, and so, this opportunity came at the right time, and.
Okay. Is that it? Do you have any questions of us?
Not that I can think of offhand.
All right. Thank you for coming in.
I just, I just want to say thank you again for having us, and if this is the right, if that's the right seat for me, I will serve you and serve this community to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
I love this community.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Reginald Williams II.
Welcome, Mr. Williams. If you'll step up to the podium, tell us when you're ready, and your time will start, and the first question will be presented by Councilmember Ossas.
Okay. Good evening and welcome. Question number one is, what do you find most notable about tonight's 6:30 PM regular meeting agenda?
Well, good evening, and the first thing I did notice was the, the actual agenda, but then, notable, I will definitely say public input and, public input and the hearing, public hearings, because everything else just, just seems to be approving. So, for me, I would definitely be interested in hearing what the public has to say if anyone appears tonight.
Okay. Next question.
How would you maintain the progress made regarding the control of blight and crime?
Well, I think so far, the, what's been going on with blight and crime within the city for the last few years, I think it's been, it's been great. I'm glad to say that I have been a part of that after serving almost twenty-two years on the Saginaw Police Department as an officer and community policing, and it's a huge benefit for law enforcement to see what is going on in our city. It makes things appear safer, it makes things, actually, it makes things safer. I would like to see more be done with that in a sense of maybe volunteerism, to find ways to help curb any of the funds, city funds that are being used in those areas.
Okay. Next question.
Share your ideas on ways to attract new residents and businesses to the city.
First, hats off to the manager and council, along with Chamber of Commerce and other various organizations that have been working in this area of really trying to attract these businesses. Mayor Clark, you pointed out at the State of the City address that we are here to build opportunity, community dreams, good health, and there were some other bullet points that you had, which I thought was good, and I think those are the things that we should focus on in order to attract those businesses.
Okay. Next question.
Based on the priorities set by the council and administration staff,
Based on the priorities set by the council and administration staff, which priorities do you think are most important for council to focus on?
I think that the priorities that we have, they lie within our mission and our vision statements that the city, that you all have outlined. If we focus on being inclusive, safe, and remaining vibrant while promoting residential business growth, I think we'll be better than good. And upholding all of that with the core values that you all have also outlined.
Okay. Councilmember?
The city's general fund property tax revenue is capped, and the cap is not adjustable for inflation. State revenue share has been reduced. How can the city offer necessary services as these two important revenue streams decline?
Well, I'll say that I'm glad that we do still have some of the services that we do have considering the circumstances. Again, hats off, because, I mean, just being able to do what we do within those confines, I know it has been difficult to do. I think it's important that we remain on track with what it is you are doing, and I'm hoping that we can come up with some more innovative and fiscally creative ways to help the situation. But by all means, I honestly believe we have to lift the tax cap. We have to find a way to convince our residents to change the tax cap or get rid of it. And they have to understand that it's not an overnight process. It's gonna have to, it's gonna have to be done possibly in a way of a tier program, something that will make them feel comfortable and understand what needs to happen in order for us to grow and move forward as a city.
Councilmember Bench?
Please share your thoughts on what you see as opportunities and challenges facing the city.
Well, the opportunities, I only have 15 minutes, so you guys, you all know that opportunities for the city of Saginaw is limitless. I mean, there, we can do whatever it is we want to do within the city if we have the means to do so. So, I'm very proud of our riverfront. I was the first, first person to move into the Bancroft when they opened up. And I was in there for about three and a half months by myself, but I enjoyed it. And I'm excited about what's going on within our city, especially along the river, even our condominiums that are on Hamilton Street. So, seeing that is promising. The challenges, I've still, the tax cap, again, is a challenge for us. How do we get state revenue sharing is a challenge for us. So, basically, as it boils down to an almost anything in life, money, we have to figure out a way to secure funds in order to, again, help our city grow.
Okay.
What is the role of a council member?
Oh, that's easy, to serve, to serve. That's something that I've been doing pretty much my whole adult life, and even as a teenager, for the city of Saginaw. And I think it's, it is something I will continue to do no matter what. But that is what you all are here to do, that is who will be appointed is there to do. We are here to serve to the best of our ability for the residents and the business community.
All right. Thank you. Then last, describe a community service or other role you have been involved in that has had an impact in the city.
Again, you only gave me 15 minutes. I was a law enforcement officer for 22, almost 22 years with the city of Saginaw in that role. I was a dare officer, a community police officer, prevention specialist. I've worked with, I like to think I've worked with thousands of our youth with programming that was put together through our city and with grants over the years. I ended my career at the city department with, as a public information officer. I would like to think that my time there had a positive impact in bringing people forward to help solve crimes when we first started implementing our Facebook and getting more involved with social media. I've been a coach for 18 years. My, my biggest coaching appointment was for varsity coach for girls' basketball with Arthur Hill High School. Been with Arthur Hill for about 17 of those 18 years. I like to think I'm alumni, even though I didn't graduate from there. But that, I'm Parent Teacher Association President for Arthur Hill. I just, I was just appointed to the Woodley Leadership Academy, to their board. I, I want to believe that my personal and professional image is fostered in Saginaw. I, I, I am Saginaw, and I want to do whatever I can, however I can, to promote Saginaw. When I travel and I hear people talk about Saginaw, it's not always good, but by the end of the conversation, they have a little bit more insight on the reality of Saginaw and not the perception. So, my impact, I would like to think it happens, it occurs daily, when I'm working, when I'm not working.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Do you have any questions for us?
I have no questions for you all at this time.
All right. Thank you very much for coming in.
All right.
We appreciate your, your interviewing with us.
All right.
Now, we have one more. Did, is she here?
No.
Did not come in?
She's not here.
Okay. So, we have five candidates we're interviewing. All right. Then I think we can adjourn the interview session. Is there a motion?
Probably don't.
No, no motion.
You don't need a vote. That's right. Can't vote. Okay. We will adjourn. We will return at 6 o'clock, so we have an hour. And then we will select a candidate.
The purpose of this single-subject special meeting is to consider appointment of an applicant to city council, to city council to fill a vacancy.
Before we start, I'm going to again read our audience's information. I want to say good evening to those who are here or weren't here earlier, because this is a public meeting. We ask that all members of the audience please remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. Also, I remind everyone to please silence all electronic devices. Thank you. Now, proceeding, it is time to open the floor for nominations of an applicant who has been interviewed. Is there a nomination for an applicant? Councilmember Millen?
I will place Reggie Williams II in nomination.
All right. Reggie Williams has been nominated.
A second.
Well, we really don't need a second. Okay. Is there any other nominations? Councilmember Forbes?
Don Goodrow-Hillier. I'd like to recommend.
All right. We have Don Hillier as a nominee. Councilmember Oshstas?
Nate Collison.
Nate Collison has been nominated. Is there, are there any other nominations from the table? Are there any other nominations from the table? Hearing none, the nominations will be closed. And therefore, we ask the city clerk to conduct a roll call for the, for the nominees. I will, everybody has in front of them the excerpts from the council rules of order. Does anyone, well, for the purpose of the candidates and for the public, I'll read the applicable language. Voting on candidates shall be roll call vote, with each council member naming the candidate of his or her choice. In the event no candidate receives five votes on the first ballot, candidates receiving no votes or a number of votes less than the candidate receiving the second highest number of votes shall be eliminated. If the top, two top candidates are tied, those with a fewer number of votes shall be eliminated. Candidates tied for second place shall remain in the running and voting shall continue until a candidate receives five votes. Should all candidates be tied for first place, voting shall continue until the tie is broken and the process outlined in the preceding paragraph shall be followed. The candidate reappointed shall take office of the next regularly scheduled council meeting, which will be tonight at 6:30. There. Council, or Madam Clerk, if you will conduct a roll call.
Okay. Now, your choices are Reggie, Don, or Nate. Councilmember Millen?
Reggie Williams.
Councilmember Bench? Don. Councilmember Forbes?
Don.
Council, Mayor Protem Moore?
Williams.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Williams.
Councilmember Balls?
Williams.
Councilmember Oshstas?
Don.
Mayor Clock?
I was afraid to come down to this.
That's why you the man.
That's why I the mayor. Ah, yes. I have to say, my first choice is Don, so we will have to have a runoff. The third candidate has been eliminated, and we will have to have a runoff between the two top candidates. Madam Clerk, we'll need another roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Millen?
Reggie Williams.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Williams.
Councilmember Oshstas?
Don.
Councilmember Balls?
Williams.
Councilmember Bench?
Williams.
Councilmember Forbes?
Don.
Councilmember Mayor Protem Moore?
Williams.
Mayor Clock?
I'm gonna go with Williams. Need to resolve this.
Reggie Williams has one, two, three, four, five votes. Don has two. Therefore, Reginald Williams is your candidate.
Mr. Williams, congratulations. Ms. Hillier, thank you for your efforts. Other candidates, we wish to thank you as well for your applications and your interviews and your efforts on behalf of appearing or becoming a voter to city council.
And running November.
I have been reminded by my Mayor Protem that there is another opportunity, and that is to run in November. And we should point out, I believe, this November, the new Reggie Williams will have to run as well.
Yes.
Because this is a replacement of a candidate, of a council member who resigned and would have been running in the Democratic election had he chose to continue. So, at this point, Mr. Williams, please step forward. You need to be sworn in.
I solemn swear.
I solemn swear.
That I was supported.
That I was supported.
As the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Michigan.
And the state of Michigan.
And that I faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Councilmember.
Councilmember.
For the city of Saginaw.
For the city of Saginaw.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Mr. Williams.
Where you going?
All right. Yeah. No, no. Okay. Yes. You can, you can give, you can give that, but you're gonna come up here. Yeah. Yes.
They put him to work.
And then you the newbie, so you sit at the end.
At the 6:30.
After 6:30.
Well, we're gonna hold off. We're gonna, that will be at 6:30. In the meantime, again, congratulations and thanks to all our candidates. We will, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Support.
Hold on, favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Will we adjourn? Good evening, everyone, to our regular Saturday, Monday night city council meeting. Today, we will be led in prayer and pledge by Councilmember Michael Balls.
We repeat, by all his pleas, in the name of God, the most gracious, the most merciful, we come here today to seek your guidance for this city council meeting. And please, Lord, look over all our citizens, our fire, our policemen, and all our administrators to make sure this city is run well and in good order and doing things right. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor? Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Forbes?
Present.
Councilmember Bench?
Present.
Mayor Protem Moore?
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Present.
Councilmember Millen?
Present.
Councilmember Balls?
Present.
Councilmember Oshstas?
Present.
And Mayor Clock?
Here.
We have nine members present, zero absent.
Thank you. We want to welcome our brand-new council member, Mr. Reggie Williams. Welcome. Good evening, everyone. Because this is a public meeting, we ask that all members of the audience please remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. Also, I want to remind everyone to please silence all electronic devices at this time.
I have a question.
Well, this is not the time, sir. I'm sorry.
Actually, this is the time, because I take medicine by my telephone. It reminds me.
Could you put it down at a lower volume, please? Thank you. Just do the best you can, is all I can ask. Thank you, sir. All right. Madam Clerk, we are ready, I believe.
Thank you. Mayor, I do have a couple announcements. Absentee ballots for the March 10th presidential primary are available in the city clerk's office during regular business hours. And the city's clerk's office will be open this Saturday, March 7th, from 8 o'clock a.m. and 9 o'clock p.m. for absentee voting. And please make a note that city council's next regular meeting is March 16th at 12 o'clock noon. It is our student government day. Mayor, that takes us to public input.
Thank you. Welcome to all those who have signed up to address council tonight. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. When called to the podium, let us know if you will be speaking solely for yourself or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points first. We ask that your presentation be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV, and to the council so we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to city staff. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Our first speaker tonight is Glendora Lawrence.
When I signed up, they told me, don't start me yet. They told me to bring copies. So, do I still need to do that?
If you'd like council to have copies, they come for me.
Okay. Good evening, councilmembers, city manager, and staff. My name is Glendora Saros Lawrence, and with me is Gary Dawkins. I'm the office manager for the Horton Jones Neighborhood Association. We have been incorporated as a nonprofit neighborhood improvement association for 28 years. My reason for appearing before you are twofold. First, to thank you for supporting and believing in the Horton Jones Neighborhood Association and all other neighborhood associations, which have allowed us to be a partner in building up Saginaw to its highest potential. Realizing that the law now allows city employees to live outside of the city, it is important to see our firefighters and police officers on a regular basis. During our meetings, we share best practices, fellowship, and break bread together. We don't just see them during a crisis or emergency situation. Again, we say thank you for your leadership and support. The second reason that I am before you is to share with some and remind others how one great fire marshal employed by the city for 30 years has lived in the neighborhood during that entire time, has made an impact on thousands of lives in the city of Saginaw. For many of those years, there has been some, this awesome fire marshal walked through our doors, sometimes invited and sometimes not. That is why we describe him as our foe and our friend. Councilmembers, you will be happy to hear about why Ralph Martin has become a foe to Horton Jones. Whenever Ralph is in the building, we notice that he is always walking around. At first, I thought, why is he so nervous? Why doesn't he just sit down and participate in the topics at hand? As many of you know, Ralph loves to eat. So, we then thought he was being nosy and looking to see what, if anything, we had to eat. Well, we actually learned that he was looking to see if the resource center was in compliance. He was looking for our building and room capacity notifications. He was looking to see the last time we had our fire extinguishers checked. He was checking to see if our smoke detectors were working properly or if we had the latest version installed. It seemed as though every time he appeared at the resource center, I had a... It seemed as though every time he appeared at the resource center, I had a to-do list by the time he left. But because of his professionalism, his genuine concern, we have remained safe and compliant because Ralph Martin has been a firefighter 24/7 for the past 30 years. Children and adults look up to him because Ralph made being a firefighter cool. So, as you notice, while describing Ralph as a foe, it becomes apparent that he is our friend, too. Through the years, Ralph has appeared at numerous neighborhood festivals with the Smokehouse. He has attended hundreds of neighborhood meetings, bringing with him tips on fire safety, but mostly, he has brought his appetite. So, as our way of saying thank you to Ralph this evening, we want to present him with a few tokens of our appreciation. These to-go containers, plastic wrap, aluminum foil, Ziploc bags, and lastly, a gift card so he could buy something to eat. We love you, Ralph, and we wish you only the best as you retire from the Saginaw Fire Department at Thursday at 8:00.
Well, wait a minute. Ralph, Ralph. Ralph, you can't leave, you have to share. Isn't that what your teacher always told you? Isn't that what your teacher always told you?
Always told, I had my mom and dad.
Can we have a few words? Would you like to say, well, you really can't at this time, but we'd welcome a few words if you would like to. Be very brief.
Very brief, city council, mayor, everybody in city of Saginaw, I just want to say thank you so much, Horton Jones. I'm really, I'm overwhelmed right now, speechless almost, that's very rare. But I just want to say thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. It feels very good to feel appreciated, and it's doing something that I just love to do. So, thank you, and always remember, be safe.
Alright, our next speaker.
Next speaker, I think there's more coming up. Karen Lawrence Webster, please.
Ms. Webster.
Okay, Karen has signed up.
Yep, she's my voice tonight.
Karen Lawrence Webster signed up.
Only one person can speak who has signed up, yeah.
And she's gonna speak.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Alexis Thomas, and I am currently the vice president of the African Cultural Festival. And we are here tonight on behalf of the Saginaw African Cultural Festival, and we would like to present our president, Ralph Martin, with this plaque of appreciation for all of his hard work and service to the city of Saginaw and the volunteer, and the volunteer services to the many community organizations that he is a part of. Every second full weekend in August, you can find Ralph on the Morley School grounds, assisting and ensuring the festival goes on without a hitch, whether that entails making sure all of our vendors have the appropriate electrical needs, or ensuring that the Smokehouse is on the grounds for the children that attend the festival. Ralph is always there, ready, available, and able to help, but also to make sure that we're safe and to make sure that we are following and meeting all codes while we're out there on those grounds. So, Ralph, your attention to detail is totally not overlooked, and we just want you to know how much we appreciate you, how much we value your service, how happy we are to have you as our president, and how happy we are to assist in your transition and celebrate your 30 years working for the city of Saginaw.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Grant Garrett.
Mr. Garrett? Mr. Garrett?
I do not see him. Glenn Stephens, please.
Mr. Stephens, welcome.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak at your meeting tonight. I'm here on my personal behalf right now, I'm the director at Stars, but my name's Glenn Stephens, and I'm just here to mention that we do have a millage coming up on the ballot on March 10th, and the city millage is extremely important to the functioning of Stars. So, I just remind the community that without the city's support of Stars, there is no Stars. And I like my job, and I like to think that the other 112 or so employees at Stars also do, and that the people in the city and the surrounding areas also enjoy access to medical needs, groceries, what have you. So, please get out and vote on March 10th, and I also wanted to add that Stars is holding Free Ride Day again on Election Day, as we've been for the past several years. So, there's not much excuse not to get out and vote. Please get out and vote.
Thank you, Mr. Stephens.
Our next speaker is Charles Coleman.
Mr. Coleman, welcome.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, councilmembers, fellow members of the Saginaw community, I stand today as Pastor Charles Coleman, the pastor of New Faith Temple Church of God in Christ, as a member of the Religious Leaders Table of the Ezekiel Project, and as a member of the Executive Committee of the Saginaw Branch of the NAACP. The Ezekiel Project, as you know, is a faith-based, community-based, social justice organization. The NAACP is the nation's largest, oldest and largest civil rights organization, and I come today to address the upcoming census. The 2020 census, as you know, is very important. I don't need to stress to this body how important it is. I'm confident that you're acutely aware of the financial and political implications that an undercount here would mean to our community. Those implications will resonate into this community in a negative manner, and rebounding will be difficult, if not impossible, in today's current climate. It's our desire, both as clergy and community, to assist in ensuring that we have a complete count. We're organizing our churches, our neighborhoods, to provide opportunities for people to come and complete the census forms. Setting aside a date as a municipality will, in my opinion, establish the importance of Count Day. We're asking that council establish for 2020 Count Day, April 1st, 2020, as Count Day. The cost to the city is negligible, but the return on this investment, even if it means only 56 new people counted, is worth it. Please consider joining us in making 2020 Count Day, April 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Coleman.
Our next speaker is Terry Pruitt.
President, President Pruitt, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and to the councilmembers, city manager and city staff. I'm just gonna sort of echo and reinforce the comments that Mr. Coleman has already presented to you. April 1st is a critically important day for this community. A number of us have come together in a collaborative way to work to make sure that we do everything we can to bring people to be counted. I'm currently serving as one of the co-chairs with the Complete Count Committee, as well as president of the NAACP, where I also have a national mandate to work this effort in this community. No need for long commentary about the importance of the census, you already know that, but I also would encourage you via proclamation, resolution, whatever, to designate April 1st as 2020 Census Community Count Day. There are a number of events that will be coming together on that day, including an all-day radio phone. My specific charge is to assist in getting the African-American community to participate at the fullest level. We know that Saginaw has been targeted as one of those potential undercount communities, especially in the minority communities, and so we're asking your support and endorsement of naming April 1st as sort of a community day for gathering and activities and educating people about the census and getting them to participate. So, if you would oblige us, I'd be greatly appreciative of that. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Willie Haynes. Willie's not here, and let's go to Joyce Seals.
Welcome, Mayor Seals.
How are you this evening? Joyce Seals, 2559 North Woodbridge Street, Saginaw, Michigan 48602. I'm here also tonight on behalf of the Ezekiel Project, as well as part of the NAACP, to encourage our council, the mayor, and staff to support April 1st as a get-out and be a part of the census day. It's important to our city, as has already been stated, everyone knows about that magical number of 50,000. I believe we can actually, if we do our work here in the city of Saginaw, we can reach that number and even above, where we can get a complete count. So, I'm hoping that not only will you do that today, but up until July, I hope that you will support that from this table, and every councilperson that has an opportunity, please say something about the census at this table. If we begin to push that, I believe that people are gonna say, my goodness, I better fill that out, and I'm getting on my nerves, praise God. But also, I just want to let you know that we met with your, our city clerk about a week ago, and I was so happy to meet her. She is really a competent lady, and we're so happy to have her at the city of Saginaw. We met with her, with voters, not politicians, to talk about having access for our citizens in the city of Saginaw. So, what we want to do, and we recommended that day, when we talked to her, to have one day a week, maybe an extended day, maybe on a Wednesday, maybe from 10 to 7, or something of that nature, whatever you can work out, to try to accommodate our people, so that people who have these odd schedules will have an opportunity to come in and take advantage of whatever we have available, so they can make sure they can get their vote in. So, I would like for this staff, as well as the city council, to consider that recommendation, and that comes to support people in the community, because we want everyone to vote. We want everyone to vote, and let's remove every impediment that would keep them from being able to do that. You're doing a great job, you're gonna be open on some Saturdays before the election, that is great, we're in line, and that's good, but I'm concerned about people who don't work between 8 and 4, who work between 8 and 4, who need to come at a little bit later time. So, maybe during a couple of weeks or so before, we can extend our hours, so we can help accommodate people, to help them make sure that they can vote. We want everyone to vote in our community, and let's make it happen for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bill Scheiburger.
Good evening. Hello. Mayor Floyd Paul Clark. Members of the council, city manager and staff, and the audience, people in the community that are listening at home on the TV. I promise to give fair play for the various millages, and number one is the Police and Fire Millage. And Saginaw has enjoyed a reduction in crime, even with the scarce manpower of 55 officers, but it's really the community that helps solve these felonies or criminal wrongdoing, and also people calling in fires or reporting an arson or something like that. So, I urge the citizenry to vote yes. Then it comes to the other millages, Stars included, but if you look at your absentee ballot, or your regular ballot, you'll vote on March 10th. Be sure to look on the other side, because that's where the silly city millages are. And number one, a lot of people forget to turn over and vote on the back of the ballot. And I will ask the public again, I think this is my third time, to vote yes for the Stars Millage, because with the 3.2 millage that's levied on property taxes, that accounts for 20% roughly of the operating revenue. And in order, but we wouldn't have a bus system unless it was for our local voters voting yes. And for those at home and here in the audience that are against our millage for Stars, we get 80% of our grant money from the state and federal government. So, it's pretty no-brainer situation. Then another thing I'd like to talk about is the Voting Rights Act, and I'm putting out a challenge, you usually don't see somebody that looks like me putting out a challenge to the city council and members in the audience of the NAACP, to celebrate August 6th, 1965. That was when Lyndon Johnson, our president, signed the Voting Rights Act, and this year, 2020, is the 55th anniversary. And what I mean celebrate is, you don't have to bring out the champagne or something, but have some kind of outdoor picnic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scheiburger.
Our next speaker is Mark Scheiber. Schwager, sorry.
Welcome, Mr. Schwager.
My name is Mark Schwager, live at 1806 North Clinton Street here in the city of Saginaw. I'm here protesting about loud music that coming from vehicles. I'm also informing that those music is a felony against animals, whether it's cruelty to animals and child abuse. I have mentioned that in the past. Now, the second thing I'm here for is, I had to pay $125 to the city of Saginaw for not living in a house that has my grandbaby in it, my son and his girlfriend is living there. Why am I being penalized for $125, and what is that money being used for? Any answers? I need an answer, because nobody's gonna give me one.
Your inquiry referred to the city manager for a response?
Yes. Well, hey, she was supposed to give me a response, and I got nothing, so. Hey, go ahead, I see your finger up, go ahead.
She, we, this is, this is not something that we can do from the table.
Well, I'm requesting that you guys change this law. As long as somebody is in these houses, oh, I gotta make a statement, I am not a landlord. I want everybody to understand this, I am not a landlord. These people are living in that house for nothing. They are required to pay the bills, that's it. The roof over my grandbaby's head is what my concern is. When I get penalized for the $125, and next year, it's supposed to go up even higher. What am I supposed to do? You guys, it's still, it's taking money out of my back pocket. So, just change the laws to make it a benefit. If you need to talk to me, I got some ideas on how to change those laws. You know, I can understand your point of where if somebody's not living there, where the house is being condemned, going down into the ground, I can understand that point. But somebody's there to keep it up, keep the house, the grass is cut, sidewalk shovel, which I do anyways. So, what, what is that $125 being used for?
Again, I can only refer your request, your inquiry, to the city staff.
Okay, let's go back to loud music coming from vehicles. It is a felony, cruelty to animals, which is a felony, cruelty to children who hurts their hearing. I have come up since 1995 periodically through this council, these years coming from this council, request to do something about it. It hurts my hearing, I, it's just a misdemeanor, but it needs to be done, because it's hurting our children's hearing. We're always heard shake, bacon shake syndrome. Most of these people have some type of hearing problems that do this stuff. Eliminate the problem, eliminate the hearing, I mean, the loud noise, maybe we might have a nice little city to live in. Oh, also get ahold of the sheriff department and the townships and say, hey, this law's gotta be implied. So, every police officer who pulls over a vehicle from loud music, give them a ticket.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. I gotta go home and take medicine.
All, all inquiries, as I said earlier, will be referred to the city manager. I must also point out to those who have requested April 1st as the city count day, I think it's a wonderful idea, but there is a process for proclamations. We would at least ask someone fill out that form, so we would have a record, and there's some information you can provide on that form. And the city manager or the staff can advise further if you have any questions on that.
I have one more thing that's off the record.
Well, the time is up, sir.
Well, I know the time is up, but this has to do with that flag.
Well, it's still, the time is up, I apologize. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor, we are now at remarks of council.
I would remind the councilmembers, there is a three-minute time limit. Today, we begin with Councilmember Moore.
Good afternoon.
Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank all of our public speakers. Congratulations to fire marshal. Congratulations to Fire Marshal Martin, NAACP, well, the Committee for the Census. Please get something into the office as soon as possible, describing what it is you want, with the information, and I'm sure that they will get to it as soon as possible. Loud music, he left, but he was here and I'm sure that city manager is going to address that issue so that we have an answer or a response. This week was a pretty busy week. I went to the unemployment, well, I'm sorry, Michigan Works program on Friday and they talked about a new program that was called Mid Career Quest. It's a similar program that I just seen a couple of weeks ago with councilman balls that they're doing, where they're actually training, retraining individual young children to do skilled trades. It is something that, it is moving towards a trend because our children are not going to college like they used to, let's be honest. College is not for everybody. Some people will like to work on cars so they're getting skills for that. The other announcement I'd like to make is Consumer's Energy is having a workshop, save the date, Tuesday, May the 5th, at Hoyt Library, from 4 to 7. They will be offering training on clean air. We'll also have some more information coming up leading to that time. And that's it for me, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Bench.
Good evening and thank you. Thank you to our public speakers. With so many important millages and the census going on all at the same time, it's very important that we continue to remind not just council, but the members of the public that there's a lot of information that needs to be shared with our community to make sure that people fully understand how important participating in the election and participating in the census is. Well, welcome our newest council member, welcome, Councilman Williams. And I want to congratulate Ralph on his retirement. He'll be missed, obviously, very much, so. And thank him for everything he's done for, for the city and the community that was well above and beyond what was expected of him all of the time, so. I want to thank Jan and her staff. I had the opportunity to change, to attend one of the election trainings since I will be working the election. And you guys did a fantastic job of making sure that we all understood and felt ready to go and hopefully, you know, do things very thoroughly like they should be at the, at the polls, so I'm very, very impressed with how, how well you did. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you to our speakers again tonight. I'd like to express my sincere congratulations and warm welcome to Councilmember Williams. I know from your involvement in the community that you'll bring a positive spirit and some colla, some real collaboration to this table, so I look forward to working with you. We're so blessed to have had incredible members from this community apply for that position. And having interviewed myself, I know that it's tough to sum up your ideas about the city in an interview process like that and to all those that applied, I'm thankful. Speaking of thank yous, thank you to Fire Marshal Martin. I can't imagine the number of lives that you have saved during your 30 years. Your work has transformed our city and transformed the lives of the people that live here. But I have a feeling that we will see plenty of you in the future and for that I'm thankful too. I agree with our speakers that the census is so incredibly important to Saginaw and to every city. I've been to some of the planning meetings and I can testify to how this community is rising up and tackling this challenge together. There are so many important events being planned to focus on different areas of our community. And I'm also happy to report that Stars will be offering free rides on April 1st in addition to Election Day, which will allow everyone to be able to access these events and to complete their census. So there'll be more information coming out about that, but I'm really excited about that. The least we can do is remove that particular barrier, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Now, Councilmember Williams, this will be your first chance to address council and, and the members of the public about matters that are of interest and concern to you. There is a, just so you'll know, at the end of the meeting, there's also miscellaneous opportunity, but this is your formal opportunity in three minutes, so go for it.
Thank you. Thank you to the council for the appointment. I am honored. I'm excited, very excited. And yeah, I'm glad to be here, glad to be here. Fire Marshal Martin, Ralph, you are a staple to the Saginaw community. We appreciate you. I know I do. We've worked together over the years and in the public and with youth and I definitely appreciate you. And as Jamie said, that you're definitely going to be around, you, you're Saginaw, so. I would also like to definitely say, state the support for the census, for people to participate in the census. It is very important, especially with the dollar amount that comes back to our community. We need everyone to be involved and get as many people as you can to be involved. Along with that, make sure we vote. Make sure we get out and vote. And with that, that's.
Thank you. Councilmember Ossess.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody, and thanks for coming out. We have a lot of people that showed up tonight, so that's good to see and to everybody that's watching at home. Just a real quick note about the people that are here about the census. Thank you for all the work that you're doing on that. We kind of have been talking about it a little bit here and also I, just to let you know, I do carry my flyers with me all the time, so I'm constantly handing them out and letting people know that it's just a quick little four by six with great information on there for you. And also just a thank you to Stars and the stuff that you're doing for the city. It's really important, free rides, for voting, and it really helps to get our citizens out and kind of breaks down that barrier. Just another thing too, I want to give, I attended the OSPE Awards this year and that's for the Saginaw Basin Land Conservancy. I just want to say thank you to this organization for everything that they are doing in the city of Saginaw. And when you go to the, when you go to the awards banquet, you really get a chance to kind of see like all the projects that they're doing. One of the projects that they're very proud of and that they're hoping to wrap up this year is they've been maintaining of 1,500 vacant lots for the city, doing plantings and flowers and stuff. So their goal is to get that project over this year. But one of the things I noticed interesting about that is that they're actually documenting all of these 1,500 properties for the city so that we know what the inventory is and in case something would happen, that we could, that we would know what that lot could be used for. So thank you to that organization. I also had the opportunity to attend the Michigan Municipal League's Weekender over the weekend, took a deeper dive into some of the programs and tracks that they were doing there. I attended with Councilwoman Forbes and Councilwoman Protem, Mayor Moore, Mayor Protem Moore. And so it was a really good weekend and just actually just getting more education and you get the chance to then talk to other folks from different cities and villages throughout Michigan to kind of see like they're having the same success stories as you are, but you're also trying to get over some of a lot of the same hurdles. So that was a good weekend event and I thank that organization. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Ossess.
Thank you very much. I don't want to be redundant on everything where everybody else said, but I'm extremely conscious on what everybody else has talked about so far. Fireman Marshall, we really thank you for all the work that you've done in the community and inspire young kids to maybe want to be firemen. And I'll, and for your work with the African American Festival, I'll make sure that you get $5,000 from the Wanda Gays Credit Union this year. I make sure that happens. And we believe in helping the people, they help out our credit union. The NAACP, I want to thank you guys, from the oldest, boldest civil rights organization in the United States. I want to thank you for all the work that you have been doing and you keep doing it. The census is extremely important in our community. We must get out and get the vote out because it's going to affect all of us like you're saying. If everybody's not counted, it's going to be, a lot of money's not going to come here. I had the opportunity to talk to some young guys about voting and they said, man, we don't need to vote, man, that ain't going to do nothing for us and all that kind of stuff. And I kept talking and kept talking to them and I changed the mind of one guy, but the other guy, he was just going to be a hardball. But we got to go out there and talk to these young guys about getting out and voting because it's extremely important to all of us. I had the opportunity to, to attend that Weekender this week and went to municipal league. And I want to report that I met a young gentleman, the first African American male that got elected in the city of Rose Point, the first African American city councilperson. And he's a lawyer and I got to talking to him more. I got to talking to him, he found out where Trump, and he, and tears came to his ass when I mentioned that there's another lawyer I know that stayed in the same area, named Kelvin Scott. And he said that Kelvin was his mentor and he, he's the reason why he wanted to be a lawyer and all that kind of stuff. And I was a city councilperson and Kelvin was a real positive guy, he's a real upcoming person in the city of Detroit. And tears came to the guy's eye when he knew that was from Saginaw. He knew that Kelvin stayed right across the street from me, so. You know, the things that we do here today, they grow and they grow and they grow. You know, we just have to stay to it and keep on keeping our dream alive because we never know that somebody else may pick up our dream and run with it. On that note, I had the opportunity to attend the event with the council, I mean with Representative Kildie came to town and help us present Saginaw with the youth bill grant for $1.5 million. To help our community get kids back in school. Kids 16 through 24 years of age, they have an opportunity now to go back to school and get their GEDs. We have a virtual reality school for them. We're going to have computers there where they can actually do 3D work, where you can point the thing, point the pointer at a part or something, bring it to you and look inside the part. We're going to get six or seven of those computers here for our kids here. And then we're going to teach them how to get involved in skilled trades. I'll be an instructor for the program and looking forward to serving our community. So if you know any kids 16 to 24 that has not graduated from school, have them get in contact with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Milne.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I want to continue to mention some very positive developments here for Saginaw. First one is MBS International Airport received an award for being the Air Carrier Airport of the Year for 2020. I was at their annual meeting in Lansing a little over a week ago and I had the honor of accepting that on behalf of the MBS International Airport Commission. Last week, I attended the Saginaw Future Awards Lunch. They detailed 32 different projects in Saginaw County that resulted in investment of over $260 million, many of those projects in the city, but they all benefit the city. And we have almost enough Saginaw Future Board members in the room tonight or had them here that they would have a quorum. I think that just shows how involved they are beyond just their, their own particular commission they serve on. Last Thursday was the Can Council Mardi Gras Auction. Suzanne Greenberg was honored as the Child Advocate of the Year. And our mayor added the honor of a certificate of recognition from the city of Saginaw for her 24 years leading the Can Council here in the Saginaw and Great Lakes Bay region. I wanted to also thank all the applicants for the council job and point out that one of them, Dawn Hillier, showed the way in that even if they were not selected for council, they are involved in our community in many other ways and I know that will continue. Just as I know that will continue for Fire Marshal Martin, echoing some of the other council members, we will see more of you, I am sure. Thank you for your 30-year service on our fire department. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say thank you to everyone in attendance. It's so good to see so many of my friends and family members. Thank you to our speakers and everyone watching at home. I too, excuse me, attended the Saginaw Future Awards with some of my other fellow council members, so thank you to Consumers Energy for hosting us. Mr. Martin, Fire Marshal Martin, thank you and congratulations on 30 years with the fire department. I know the NAACP, all things Bethel, Reed Association, the public libraries, African Cultural Festival, and I think I hit everything. They're not going to let you go anywhere, so thank you for everything that you've done for us. You are a mentor, a role model, and definitely a leader in the community that like my fellow council members have said, you've been a staple, so. And best wishes on your next endeavor. I just want to remind everyone that even if your candidate dropped out of the race, because today seemed to be a pretty big day for that, you can still vote again. So make sure you get out there and not just for the millages, but for other important positions in the, in the vote next week. The NPHC Fine Arts Competition was held January 22nd and if you have not been to the NPHC Fine Arts Competition, you are missing out. It showcases some of the greatest talent that we have in the Saginaw community, so I want to say congratulations to everyone who participated with that. And then last but not least, I want to put a challenge out to my fellow colleagues, but also to the community. The finer women of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, which I am the president of, if you don't know by now, we are having a book drive for our National Adopted School Program and our school that we have adopted is North Saginaw Charter Academy. So from March 1st to April 30th, we are collecting gently-used or new books. Literacy is huge and a very important piece to a child's development, so if you have some books, I will gladly take them, K through 12, or no, I'm sorry, K through two books. So please, anyone in the community here at the city or my fellow colleagues, give me your books. Then also just a reminder, March 14th, the Zetas are having a health fair at Zion Missionary Baptist Church and it is the same day of the Reed Association's Book for Breakfast at the Eastside Soup Kitchen. So a lot of things going on in the community. I hope to see you there. That's all I have.
Thank you. To start, I want to again congratulate our new Councilmember Williams and welcome. Good to have you at the table. We look forward to working with you as you learn the ropes of city council. Those representatives here from the, for speaking on the census, Reverend Coleman, President Pruitt, Willie Haynes and former Mayor Troy Seals, thank you. You are correct. It is crucially important to the city that we have an accurate count. I think the numbers are that for each person not counted, it represents a loss of approximately $1,800 per year or $18,000 for 10, for the next 10 years, which means it would be about $1 million for every 56 people not counted that we would lose. That is a huge loss. We cannot afford it. The city needs our share of the federal funds and getting everybody counted for that census is critical to having that happen. So if you, whether you're here, if you're watching on SGTV, however you might get the word out, help these organizations, help the city, get the word out to get the count accurate for our city. And thank you for those four who spoke on the census. We appreciate it. I do want to mention, also thank and congratulate Fire Marshal Martin on your retirement. I want to say stick around and stay involved. We need you. On Saturday, this past Saturday, the Zekele Project had its MLK fundraiser event and I was honored to be able to be there, as were the four speakers today for the census, who were also there and mentioned it there. It was a big opportunity to do so and I want to thank them for doing that there, but it was a great event. And for those who organized it, including Reverend Coleman and all those others, thank you. I want to mention, there is, those of you who are familiar with the fact that the Saginaw River has been, been worked on through the U.S. Environment Protection Agency, they are now planning the cleanup of the Middle Ground Island in Bay City. The U.S. EPA is looking to, for comments from the public on its plan to clean up. The important part for us is that they haven't yet chosen the disposal sites and there could be concern about being in the city or the Saginaw County or even the city. I don't, I don't think so, but for those who are concerned, there is this opportunity to make comments about, anything about the cleanup. A period for comments is now through March 30th of this year. You can send email comments to russell.diane@epa.gov. She is the Community Involvement Coordinator for the EPA. It will also be a EPA public meeting on March 10th, at 6:30 PM, at the Boys and Girls Club in Bay City at 300 West Lafayette Avenue. Thank you. Madam Clerk, we are...
Next order of business is reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager, what do you have for us today?
Thank you. Since there's been a lot of talk about the census, the first thing I'd mention is that through, I know a lot of work from Mayor Protem Moore, the MML has awarded the city $25,000 from the Be Counted 2020 Census Campaign with a focus on hard-to-count community. So Mayor Protem did meet with them a lot regarding that funding and I know she has some ideas about a few events to do. And she'll be working with Vicky Davis in my office to put together budgets for those items and probably will be opportunity for a few more of those events as well. as well. Additionally, as I mentioned at the last meeting, the way that we are able to have a special assessment for public safety is because in 2004, the legislature put an exemption into that law to allow cities with Saginaw's population and the county's population to participate in that. Previously, it's open to townships and villages and cities with population under 15,000. With the upcoming census, we don't believe that the city's population would be impacted by the census, but we felt that the countywide population would probably dip below that number that allows us to participate. So we need to have that change. The city attorney and I, and the finance director, Lori Brown, and the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, met with both Senator Horn and Representative Guerra, and it went through the Senate Committee on Local Government on February 6th. Last Wednesday, I testified with Representative Guerra at the House Committee for Local Government. It passed that committee as well. I believe it has one more committee to go through, and I think then it will be on the floor in the Senate and the House, so I don't anticipate any issues with getting that passed through both of the houses. So that's encouraging. I will say too that both Senator Horn did testify for us at the Senate hearing, and Representative Guerra testified at the House, and in both cases, Senator Horn and Representative Guerra both had staff at each of those as well. So a lot of support there for that. Councilmember Millen mentioned that the MBS Airport won the award for 2019 for the Air Service Award. Also mentioned that at the last meeting, Jeff Nagel, the airport manager, did announce that he's retiring. So I believe that job will be posted this week. So that's a big, I think, a big task for that committee to replace that position, so they are public meetings, meetings open to the public, but Jeff has done a really good job with the airport. He was the manager when the new terminal was built, and I believe he's been there for 18 years, close to 20 years, so. And then, final thing I was going to mention, I know there were council members who attended the Saginaw Future Annual Meeting, and that was, mentioned the investment in the county. Good to note, that's the 28th annual meeting, so that organization has been around for a long time, and the city was a co-founder of Saginaw Future, so that's important as well. And I would commend them as well for adapting to the needs of the city. Initially, that organization was founded for, I think, primarily manufacturing, recruitment, and retention, and they still do that, but we've asked them to adapt and provide a lot of urban planning-type services for the city of Saginaw. Right now, Tom and Cassie Miller act as the DDA Director for the city. Cassie Miller is assisting with planning in the city, working with the Planning Committee, and they also do a lot of work with small businesses in the city, and grants and other items, working with the DEQ and the MEDC. So that's important to note, important that they have been able to change the way they do business to accommodate our needs here in the city. Lastly, we do have a presentation on the agenda tonight, and Glenn Stephens from Stars, the executive director, asked to present an update on the services that Stars has provided, and I'll say that I think Glenn has done an excellent job at Stars as well. If you recall, they did have some issues a few years ago, and they've had a big turnaround there, so at this time, I'd ask Glenn to step to the podium for his update.
Thank you so much for the kind words, Mr. Manager, and thank you all for having me here tonight and the opportunity to speak about Stars Services. It's been a couple of years since I've been here to update you on Stars. About a year ago, I was pretty busy with some service emergencies and figuring out whatever crisis was happening at the time. But I'm here tonight to update you on where we're at, a little bit of where we've been, but really where we're at and where we're going. So, you know, you've all heard the story before. Back in 2015, there was a crisis at Stars. We had layoffs, we had consolidation of routes, we had federal funding issues, we had budget problems. It was a bit of a mess. Fast forward to 2016, we had, after MTA had stepped in, MTA from Flint is interim manager for Stars, brought in a new administration team, including myself, and we immediately increased fares by about 25 cents to restore Saturday service. That was met with the resounding thank you from the community when we looked at that fare increase. It's not often you can raise taxes or fares or some type of service fees and have people thank you for it, but that was the situation we were in. We also revised the route systems over the next couple of years, too. Longer service hours, running until 9:00 p.m. Star Services were closing at 7:40. If you worked till 5:00 o'clock, you had enough time to hop on the bus, transfer, and get home. If you wanted to go to the store, the doctor, anything like that, it's right out. We also started a job route in 2017, the Pigeon Express, which I still hold is like the poster child for public-private partnerships. We take about 150 Saginaw workers out to Pigeon, Michigan, out in the thumb to some steel mills three times a day, and that route is financed and funded, I should say, not financed, funded entirely through our partnership with those businesses. The employees that ride have a payroll deduction agreement with the employer. Stars has made whole for the cost, so it doesn't cost any government fees. The city millage, for example, doesn't go to fund this, and that is the type of model if we're going to look at doing future deals with employers, we really need to get into. We've also replaced, in 2017, we replaced about 20 H vehicles. I think last time I was here, I was probably talking about getting 13 refurbished buses from Midwest, which is a bus company out of Owasso, Michigan. Last year, we hit the jackpot. I found an agency down in Columbus, Ohio, that had bought too many buses. Long story short, Stars got to buy 15 buses for $120,000. These were from 2007, so they're a little older, but they are even newer than the old other used buses we were buying in the past, but a normal purchase of a brand-new bus costs upwards of a half-million dollars. So for us to get 15 of them for $120,000 was a steal. They're running around out there on the roads right now. Continued growth, last year, big news for Stars, or about a year and a half ago, almost, $5-million award from the FTA to Stars for 19 new vehicles. That award statewide was for 22 vehicles. 19 out of the 22 statewide are coming here to Saginaw. And last board meeting at Stars, we just approved the purchase for the first five of them, and we'll be continuing to move forward on that. So that's, since I've started my tenure, the first time we'll be able to buy brand-new large buses. We bought a couple of the small cutaways brand-new, but nothing that big yet. The last time Stars purchased a new big bus was in 2010. So we've got a lot of catching up to do, but I'm very optimistic about where we're at, and again, where we're going. That federal audit, I talked to you about last time I was in a couple of years ago, that Stars failed miserably back in 2015. We've had another one since then, and we have resolved all the issues. We did not have anything hanging over our heads. No funding cuts, no holdback of funding from the federal government that risks shutting Stars down like we had back in 2015. So 2019, last year, we started a countywide rides-to-wellness program. This is the first time Stars has dipped its toes into countywide service. And much like the Pigeon Express that I talked about, this is funded entirely through partnerships. So again, we don't need to rely on the millage or anything for it. We can use partnership funding, and our biggest partners right now are Saginaw County Community Mental Health and Region 7 Area Haging Agency. And right now, we're doing about 1,500 rides a month. We started that up in June of last year at 150. That's a 1,000% increase in about seven months, and I estimate there are hundreds more rides in this community every day that are not being met, and the faster we grow this program, the faster we can meet those needs. Another big one up, I'm not going to go over everything up here, but another favorite of mine is the Reading Stars Program. The Read Association for Saginaw County partners with us on that, and we transport kids from elementary schools over to homes so they can read to seniors, and we get them back over to school. Done at cost with the Read Association as well. They can supply that through grant funding, so that's a win-win for the community right there, too. Goals for 2020 that I'm looking at. Number one, route access to Kroger in Bridgeport. That's what I hear from city residents. We need more access to more grocery stores, and Stars hears that. We have to get ourselves up to a place where we can put another, a 10th bus, we're running nine routes now, get a 10th route up on the road. That would also offer to connection with MTA and Flint, which is the second bullet here. So those two goals are almost hand-in-hand. Dixie and 75 is an excellent place for the two systems to meet up, and right now, you can't really connect MTA-Flint to Star Services. Some people figured out a couple of ways to do it, but it's not anything that works for a normal person's regular, everyday schedule. Our rides-to-wellness program, we're continuing to focus that on jobs as well. People hear wellness, and they think, oh, that must be medical, and it is primarily, but I like to say wellness is whatever Stars partner says it is. If a Stars partner says wellness is getting my clients to work, then I say absolutely it is. When do we take them? If they say it's to get people to the grocery store, I say, sure thing, let's get them over to Kroger or Meyer or what have you. So we're trying to grow those partnerships with employers. That seems to be where a core need here in the community is. Another exciting thing is this year, we just finished up a bidding process, and the Stars Board just authorized purchase for a new transit management system. Now, this is going to blow your minds, because I know Stars feels like it's in the Stone Age. I'm talking about phone apps that show in real-time where your buses are, that you want to schedule your rides with the Stars Dial-a-Ride service. You can go straight in there, it schedules it in, confirms, and tells you when that thing's coming. That we have access to purchasing bus passes online and through phone apps, so we can get rid of all those little paper cards and start going with like a smart card system, or where you might just show your phone and have it scanned and get on the bus there. So really excited about that. That's like a $400,000 investment for Stars, but it's really going to catch us up to the times. Our current services, we got nine fixed routes, and our Dial-a-Ride, you've heard Stars Express, it used to be called Stars Lyft. We are getting away from the Lyft name because of that other company that's like Uber, that's spelled with a Y. So I'm trying to move to Express. I haven't catch myself on that a lot, but Stars Express and our nine fixed routes, those services are mainly funded through the city millage, federal and state grants, and Fairbox revenue. Our rides-to-wellness program for job and medical transportation, as I mentioned, that's a partnership funding source, and Pigeon Express through the employer partnership and payroll deductions. So that's really the breakdown of our core services right now. I'd like to see this list grow, and I'd like to see those funding sources grow as well. Employment at Stars, when I first came to visit you back, and I think it was 2016, to talk about Free Ride Day, we had 70 employees, and this year, we started out, and we've got 115 at Stars. That's tremendous growth. We're doing more with less, but as we do more, we increase other funding opportunities to continue to grow. Vehicles at Stars, back in 15, we had 51 vehicles, and here we are in 2020. We've got our main line in purple there, 61 vehicles. We've got 16 cutaways, and that new blue bar that just popped up last year, you see, and is in the last column there at 20, that's our rides-to-wellness vehicles. So we continue to grow on the capital front as well. Without capital investment, obviously, the services cannot be sustained. Oftentimes, we see from the state budget in Lansing, talking about, do we invest in capital? Do we invest in operating? It's a little tough for us on the local level, because we say, well, it might change on what we need to, one of those from one year to the next. You can give us all the capital in the world, but I don't have anybody to drive the bus then. You can give me all the operating in the world, but I don't have any capital to buy the buses for those drivers to get on, so that's a challenge for us. Ridership, in 2015, you see, it was about a million riders a year, and that's what we call pre-crisis. The biggest problem that Stars has had was after that crisis happened, engaging in service cuts. That was the biggest mistake that Stars could have made back then, and you can see that reflected in FY 2016 and onward, where our ridership was almost cut in half. If the system isn't there, no one's going to use it. The more we invest in it, the more people are going to use it. So a lot of times, people will ask me about ridership and everything, and I say, well, that's really in the eye of the beholder there. It can be a chicken-or-the-egg question. But what I would point to is the trend since 2018, when we bottomed out, that's just after we put in the new route system in 2018. By the next year, we were up, what, 60,000 riders, and now we're up to over 600,000 riders per year. That includes our rides-to-wellness program, which counts all toward our federal and state funding that we get back every time a rider steps on one of our vehicles. Our rides-to-wellness, I mentioned, has went up 1,000% since its program launched just last June. We're up to over 1,500 rides per month. And I'm not going to bore you with the revenue sources, except just to say that partnerships account now for a much larger portion than they have in past years. 13% of the Stars budget is based on partnership funding. Very important for us. And with that, Mr. Mayor and City Council, my presentation. If you have any questions, sir?
All right. Yes, Councilmember Millen.
Yes, a question on the vehicles used for the rides-to-wellness. I noticed they are small vehicles. Do you lease those? Do you service them yourself? Are they owned vehicles? How is that handled?
It's a mix. We started out the program with just rented vehicles, because getting the capital to purchase them has proved to be a challenge, but I'm really good at finding deals, too, on vehicles, if you haven't caught that yet. So about half the fleet right now is purchased. We have some cutaway vehicles, like the small buses. We've got vans with ramps and lifts. We've got passenger vehicles, four doors, so we try to mix it up, and about 10% to 20% of our business are individuals that use wheelchairs, so we always have to keep that in mind.
And you service these in your own garage, then?
The non-rented vehicles, yes. The rented ones, we leave that for the businesses we rent the vehicles from.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Ball.
Hey, thank you very much for the job that you're doing. I would like to commend you on such doing such a fine job in the city of Saginaw and continue to do the good work. I mean, your rise going up, you got more employees, and you're taking people farther. What more can you ask for? Keep up the good work.
Well, thank you, sir.
Any other questions from Councilmember Ross?
Just a quick comment, and to reiterate what everybody's saying, you've done a great job with Stars. I mean, I've watched this take shape over the last few years. I was excited to see the technology, the phone app, because for me, if I'm in bigger cities, especially like Chicago, you've got to carry a card, and I think they're switching over, too. So that was exciting to see, because one of the things that first I thought about is, where would that return on your investment go, as you don't have to hand out cards and people start to use that? So that'll be kind of an interesting number to see in the future. Thanks.
Thank you.
You mentioned that you want to downsize on the Lyft.
Sorry?
You mentioned, did you say something about downsizing on the Lyft bus?
No, simply changing the branding. There's a company called Lyft that does, like, if you've heard of Uber, there's a Lyft. So I was saying that we try to, we're moving to the word Express. But the Lyft or Express, I just did it. The Stars Express service is still running as many rides today as it was last year or the year before, if not more, and even with rides-to-wellness coming on and us taking on another over 100 rides per day, the other one's still topped out. We can't give rides fast enough.
So what is, what does ride-to-wellness, when we talk about, let's talk about Region 7. Region 7 would use it for what?
Using it mainly for medical transportation. Dialysis is a big-ticket item there. So whereas maybe private companies, I know some of these rides, or people using ambulances and paying hundreds of dollars to get somebody to a basic medical appointment, Stars will do it for $15 each way. We have worked to do that at cost, and that's the most exciting thing there. Dealing with other government agencies who have limited funding as well, it's important to keep as much funding in those agencies as possible.
So is that, is that, is that the going rate? You say $15 each way, is that the going rate?
That's Stars' rides-to-wellness going rate. Different providers have different prices, and that price is calculated to meet our cost and no more. We're a nonprofit government agency, and the way I see it and my philosophy at Stars has been, we figure out how much that service costs for our partners and ask our partners for that much. We're not here to make money, we're here to provide a service and make sure that government is made whole.
So is this open to, everybody in the community, do a lot of people know about it? Do you have to be a senior citizen?
You have to be a partner with the Rides-to-Wellness Project. I would love to open it up countywide, but we would be inundated. it up countywide, but we would be inundated. Right now, we are growing, and we'll watch closely and say, how many more rides can I do, maybe by next month with the new staff coming in? We think we can handle about 200. All right, let's find a partner who can supply about 200. Ultimately, I think in years out, this type of program is our gateway into countywide, public, anybody-can-call service.
You might want to explain a little more how the rides-to-wellness works with your partners.
Okay.
I'm not sure that's clear to some of the councilmembers.
So Stars has a, we'll start out with getting a rate agreement with a partner, agency or entity. It could be a private doctor's office. It could be an employer. It could be an insurance company. Anybody that's under some obligation to get people from point A to point B. So when they set up that rate agreement with us, we determine the terms of service. So that partner will tell me, these rides are allowed for grocery access for my clients, maybe just medical appointments. We say, okay. That partner will call us up and schedule rides for their clients. The client steps onto the vehicle, there's no fare box, nothing like that. The driver's got a tablet, he checks that that ride was performed, and at the end of the month, Stars bills the partner. And in many cases, these are paid out of Medicaid or some other type of state or federal dollars. So there's the big advantage, too. It's a win-win. Many of these state agencies or other entities aren't having to pay as much as they would if rides-to-wellness didn't exist. Stars is getting made whole for the ride, and that resident who's getting the ride pays nothing out of pocket.
So eight years ago, when the Business Education Partnership, now the Partnership Network approached our public transit to start the Ride to Work, it was almost impossible. Five years ago, when we approached it, you welcomed it with open arms. So I just want to say thank you, because that Ride to Work pilot program shifted you into Ride, what is it called? Stars Express?
Right to Wellness.
And then now down to, or you've shifted into the Rides-to-Wellness. So the vision that you have is just magical, and it's something Saginaw has needed for a very long time, and it's opened the doors to other ideas. But even your staff, the transformation in the staff at Stars, and I get to see it once a week for four hours, but it's world-class service. So I just want to thank you for what you've done and the vision and the creativity that you've brought to this community, because it's definitely something we've needed. So I just want to say thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmembers?
All right.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stephens. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
And that concludes the management update.
Madam Clerk?
Mayor, your next order of business is the Consent Agenda.
Well, the agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website, and on SGTV Channel 191. Are there any exceptions to be noted by the clerk? Any exceptions? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Thank you.
Mayor, we are now at Board Commission and Committee Reports.
Are there any boards, commissions, or committee reports? Councilmembers? Well, I was going to have one, but Mr. Stephens seemed to have covered it very well for Stars. I don't think I'll make any more comment. All right, again, any other committees? All right. Madam Clerk, next item?
We are now at ordinance consideration and adoption. Our first, first one is to amend the official city map to rezone the east half of Lot 6, Block 24, Penora Farm, City of Saginaw, from RO1 Restricted Office to B1 Local Business.
Need a motion to adopt?
Some of.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried. Madam Clerk?
Our next ordinance, amend the official city map to rezone the east half of Lot 1, east half of Lot 2, Block 9 of Penora Farm, City of Saginaw, from RO1 Restricted Office to B1 Local Business.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry.
And our third one tonight is to amend the official city map to rezone the west half of Lot 1, excluding west 20, excluding west 20 feet, west half of Lot 2, Block 9, Penora Farm, City of Saginaw, from RO1 Restricted Office to B1 Local Business.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, where's this business at, and what business is this?
Well, it's not a business, it's a zone.
Okay.
An area of, Mr. Manager, perhaps?
Yes, so it's an area that's currently zoned RO1, which is being changed to B1, which is local business.
All of these are on bond, at the location of approximately bond, state, and Genesee.
Okay, that's what I asked, okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, you're now at miscellaneous business.
Any other business, any councilors?
The Air Patrol.
I forgot to say, April the 6th, we got our money. We're having our ice cream social. We're having an ice cream social. The goal is, for every 56 people, it's worth a million dollars. My personal goal is 4 million. So I'm asking the community, along with my fellow colleagues and the county commissioners, we have to come up with some numbers. So April the 6th, from 1:00 to probably 5:00, we're going to do ice cream. The goal is 500-plus people. He will have the sprinkles, the whole nine yards. And so, it will be, I'm sorry, at Saginaw County CAC. Let me get the address. I'm sorry. 2824 Perkins. Look, I'm guessing. 2824 Perkins, but we'll be at CAC, but we're not doing ours until April the 6th at 1:00. All councilpeople, I'm asking you to come out and support. All you have to do is bring some people, and remember, the goal is 4 million dollars. And I think we could do it. I had 8,000 people that voted for me. All I need is 300 people to come and eat ice cream with me, and I will have my goal. Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Councilmember Balls?
I've got a announcement here from the Saginaw Community Cultural Diversity Explosion. They have it this Sunday, March 8th, from 2:30 to 6:00 p.m. at Arthur Hill High School. And it's open to all students and all ages. And they have, they're going to have entertainment, African drums, Mexican-American counsel, and plenty of food. Sedexo Magic is probably presenting, so come eat up Magic Johnson's food and have a good time at the cultural explosion.
Anybody else?
What time is that?
It's 2:30 to 6:00 p.m. Doors open at 1:00.
Anybody else? If not, I have a, oh, Councilmember Rasta?
Yeah, just a quick announcement for everybody here and the folks at home. Coming up April 14th, from 5:30 to 6:30 at the Jane Street Clinic, I'm going to be working with their staff there. It's an open tour, so please come out. They're going to have a tour of the building, just stories about their services they provide at the health centers, and then just some stories from their staff and that. So I'm working with them on that, so please come out and join me and join them that day. And I'll have some more information on that coming out later.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Balls.
Yes, I want to mention something else about the skilled trades, opportunity, and getting the kids back in school. A gentleman by the name of, I mentioned this to a guy named Eric Ellison about two and a half, three years ago, and he took my idea and ran with it. So what I'm saying is, sometimes we have to carry it for time so far, and we get somebody else that can run a little bit faster than we can. And Eric made it happen. We got that grant for one and a half million dollars for 40 months, and we're going to be looking forward to getting more grants and, because of this particular grant. So if anybody, know anybody between the ages of 16 and 24 years old, have them get with me so they can get in this school and get their high school diplomas, and start getting a skilled trade certificate so they can go on to be a skilled tradesman and bring some good money to the city of Saginaw, because we need tradesmen here. Thank you.
Thank you, GED.
Yes.
Anybody else? Okay, three things. Delta was recently named a top-10 military-friendly school for its efforts to ensure military students and veterans are successful in a classroom and after graduation. This is the eighth year in a row they've received the award. So our thanks go out to Delta for caring for military veterans, and especially with the city as a site for one of the schools. I think it's really important to recognize. You mentioned Councilmember Balls' runners. Well, the Runners Expo, for those health people, will be presented by Covenant Healthcare on Saturday, March 14th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Dow Bay Area Family YMCA. It's a prelude to the 47 St. Patrick's Jolt Credit Union races on March 15 in Bay City. We have both Jolt Credit Union and Covenant Healthcare in our city, so let's recognize their efforts. And for those runners, there's an opportunity to be involved. And finally, the Y Day of Giving, the city of Saginaw Y, on March 3rd, tomorrow, is having its Day of Giving. So let me see something here. If I find a little bit of information on that. It's a one-day Focus on the Community Impact Campaign. It's designed to highlight the YMCA of Saginaw's Community Impact Campaign. Several events will be held throughout the day, giving members an opportunity to support the campaign. So if anyone is interested, please help them with their impact campaign. That is all I have. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Thank you, everybody.